Check, check, one, two. 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 Check, check, one, two.
The mains are muted.
No, you'll see it on there.
President.
And maybe we can just pre-roll for the. Commissioner Ariso.
Present.
Commissioner Moyo. Gavson. Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Assistant Commissioner Fonseca.
President.
And Vice Eric Fernandez.
President.
And Chair Guedes.
Uh, President. Let me just go ahead and sorry, I want to go over the date. It's Wednesday, December sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Presidential Equity Commission meetings, thirty-six. Oh, it's an update of the.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Gabriel Perez, Development and Service Director. So we do have an update on the short-term rental program. This is an item that the Plan Commission was interested in hearing. We also have some staff present that have been part of a task force to start looking at the short-term rental ordinance for the city. And so I would like to introduce Miguel Navarrete, who used to be on the Plan Commission, is now working with us as an intern. So he's gonna assist in the first part of this presentation. So, thank you. If we can bring the PowerPoint up.
I thank you guys for being here. Thanks for the introduction, Gabe. Chair and fellow commissioners, so because of your guys' questions, we went ahead and created a task force led by our city manager in order to look at our surrounding cities' short-term rental regulations. All right, to begin with, our short-term rental regulation was adopted in two thousand seventeen. The regulation was put in place in order to mitigate adverse effects in our communities. And the regulation also made sure that we collect taxes. Secondly, currently, we have three hundred and eighteen rentals within the city. And we are collecting eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars from our transient occupancy tax. That is set at nine percent. We are here today because, like I stated in the beginning, you guys wanted to know a little bit more about our our short-term rental regulations and how we compared it with other cities. All right, so a short-term rental is a dwelling unit that is rented out no more than thirty days, and that is paid for. Secondly, we have a local contact person in all surrounding cities. This local contact person is someone who's gonna be on the property within forty-five minutes or is able to be reached via cellphone in under fifteen. And then if somebody were want or to get a permit from the city of Coachella, these are gonna be the requirements listed up above. So first and foremost, we're gonna have our owner's information. Then we're gonna need an agent or representative details. So this is if someone is renting their short-term rental through a management company, things of that nature. Third, we're gonna have our local contact person. So someone, like I stated, who could be reached at all times and could be on the presence of the property within forty-five minutes and take a phone call in fifteen. Then we had to verify if they're responsive. So this is just making sure that their phone numbers works and we could go ahead and contact them. Then we need the property details and a nuisance plan. The plan is set in place in case anything comes about in terms of complaints. Afterwards, they need a business license. And the business license is set at a hundred and eighty-four dollars. And then we need some additional information if required by administration. Last but not least, typically, people would pay an application fee. However, for the city of Coachella, we do waive that fee currently. Then this table is to showcase our short-term rental permit fee comparison with cities and Riverside County. Highlighted in red is gonna be our fee. So like I stated before, our short-term rental permit fee is waived. However, in order to get the permit, you do need to pay the hundred and eighty-four dollars for our business license. Then if you look around, some cities do have tiered systems. So these are for people who own their homes and then rent it out. And also for people who are who have secondary homes and then are renting out. In that case. We do have one of the lowest fees in the city outside of Palm Desert, which charges only twenty-nine dollars. And these are some of our regulations. So we gotta make sure that our noise, the noise complaints are in line with our noise ordinance. Then we need to make sure that we have a local contact person. You've seen this three times already. It's very important that we have someone on site. Now we need a primary occupant who is over the age of twenty-one and could be reached at all times via cellphone. And last but not least, we have our max occupancy, which is a maximum of two persons with each rental plus an additional two persons per bedroom. Okay, and then we gave you guys a table with all of our regulation comparisons. It's really long. It's probably nine by eleven sheets. So if you guys wanna take a look at that. But out of all that data, we broke it down to three main compartments where we have the city of Coachella. We don't have any limitations on short-term rentals, like surrounding cities. Some of them cap them out per neighborhood. Some of them have it zoned. We don't have neither. Then we don't have any permit fees. Like I stated, we only charge a hundred and eighty-four dollars for their business license. And last but not least, we don't have any short-term rental parking regulations. So I've noticed that other cities do have where you can only park either via on their driveway or have cars per parking, or I'm sorry, cars per bedroom in the house. All right, and in terms of what our code enforcement does with our short-term rentals, they're there to aid in any complaints that the city receives. And from now, from this point forward, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Gabe. Thank you guys for sticking with me, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Before I go on, I just wanna acknowledge some of the staff that are part of implementing the short-term rental regulations. So we have our Economic Development Director, Selena Jimenez. And we also have Cesar Lucrecio, who is responsible for processing the short-term rental permits in the city and monitoring those. And we also have Renee Rosales to my left that is our code enforcement manager. But we also have the rest of the team that are part of the task force, which include building official, Elsandro Diaz, we also have management analyst, Anay Fernandez. And then we have our planner, Adrian Moreno. So just wanted to acknowledge them. So we also wanted to look at the data with respect to our short-term rentals in the city and what that looks like, right? A lot of times, we really need to plan based on data and what the data shows us. So if you were to look at a map of the city and plot all the short-term rentals, you can kinda see the pattern that's going on in the city. A lot of those short-term rentals, the three hundred and eighteen that we talked about, are concentrated more on the west side of the city. And a lot of that concentration is in the newer developments. So we're seeing in the new developments, the west side of the city. And part of that reason could also be that that's an area that's closest to the Coachella Music Festival grounds. You know, the other thing that has been a concern is how many people are buying homes as investments, right, versus owner-occupied? And so we did create a map of data from two thousand twenty-two, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty that shows by city the percentage of second homes in the city, right? So if you looked at the city of Coachella, the percentage of second homes in the city is actually pretty low at this time. And I can't read the number for me, but I think it's like one point nine percent, right? So if you look, the highest numbers are really Indian Wells has a high percentage, but the other higher numbers are Palm Springs and Palm Desert. So we are still pretty low, but it is something for us to monitor. Because there was a concern that a lot of those homes were potentially being used as short-term rentals and as second homes in the city. We did look at, a closer look at the Sevilla development by Pulte. There was a lot of this has been the community that's been raised as the concern for short-term rentals and second homes. And so we did analysis, a lot of, you know, a little bit less than half of the homes are owned by those that have a million dress outside the city. And then the dots reflect short-term rental permits in the cities. So short-term rental permits have been pulled for, you know, those homes that look to be out-of-city owners, but there are some in-city owners that are also operating in short-term rentals. Now, this isn't the most updated information because you could see the darker red reflects the homes that Pulte was still trying to sell. So that's probably not reflected on the county property record. But at least this gives you kind of a picture of what's going on. There are quite a few of the homes that were purchased by out-of-town buyers. And then we did analysis of the short-term rental by neighborhood concentration. So the neighborhoods that do have a higher concentration of short-term rentals are La Colonia on the western side of the city, Vieira del Sol, Las Plumas, and Valencia. All those were above sixteen percent. But La Colonia also being the highest, close to thirty percent. A lot of the other communities were in the single digits in the city. But there have been other cities that do regulate it by concentration. And so sometimes, you know, twenty percent. There's not a lot of communities that reach that threshold. As far as short-term rental revenues, we thought this was helpful to kinda analyze and seeing what the benefits of short-term rentals were to the cities in terms of revenue. So the city of Coachella, the last fiscal year was able to bring in eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. When you compare that to the other cities, it's actually considerably lower. I think Indian Wells here is shown as lower two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. But our adjacent cities, cities of Indio and La Quinta are pretty high, right? So the city of Indio is eight million dollars and then La Quinta, six million dollars. If you look at the comparison of the transit occupancy tax rate, we're at the lower end, right? And then my understanding, I think Caesar was able to provide this data that nineteen eighty-six, that that's when we adopted our TOT tax rate. So that was a long time ago.
What was that?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yeah. So that was a long time ago. So ours is nine percent, but if you look at the Jason City, Indio, it's at thirteen percent. If you kinda observe that, being at the high end, it still hasn't stopped them from attracting hotels coming into their city. Um, and then just here's here's the distribution on the bar graph, just showing, you know, um, the last fiscal year, the revenues and we're on the lower end. And then just looking at the bar trend, the the line trends over the the five year period. So obviously Palm Springs is doing really well in the short term rental revenue area, but uh we're on the lower end. So I'm looking at this data and and discussing this, there's more to do. Um, the short term rental regulations um aren't in the zoning code, so there isn't um the direct involvement from planning commission and shaping like the ordinance. Uh, but there is feedback that we'd like to be able to get from the planning commission. So when this item does go to the city council that uh, we can share uh your thoughts on on this ordinance. Uh, we had mentioned to the city council that we would like to bring some type of updated ordinance. Obviously, the Sevilla two development became a concern uh for short term rentals. This would be a community that would be located on the west side of the city and the newer development. So it kind of meets those thresholds of uh potentially being a attractive place for short term rentals in the city. Uh, so as the task force, we we're we're looking at some potential updates uh that uh we may want to pursue. One is increasing the permit fee for short term rentals. Right now, we only charge the business license fee. Um, some of the other cities charge as much as seventeen hundred dollars, but that also pays for some of the things that the city needs to do, right? Code enforcement, the permit processing, um also software, and we'll go into that a little bit. A lot of times there's compliance software that the cities rely on. Uh, the next thing is a tiered fee system. So um, if you, you know, um, you have this comparison chart in front of you. So this shows you what all the cities are requiring. Um, some of the cities like the city of La Quinta have a tiered fee system that allow for a lower uh price for the fee for owner occupied households, but are using it for short term rentals occasionally. And then a higher fee for those that are just buying the home for that purpose. And then the next is some comprehensive regulations. So we we think it's time to uh look at our regulations, make sure that they're up to date. Um, one of the things that we noticed in the ordinance is that there is a requirement for a written agreement between the owner, the the um, the rental and then the person that's going to rent the home. And I and I don't think we require that for every single rental, and that's probably too tedious to do that for every s- single short term stay in the city. Um, next is transit occupancy tax modification. So looking at our tax rate, we're at nine percent, which is lower than a lot of our surrounding cities. So you know, is it time to raise that that T O T tax rate? So that's comparable. Um, that's not something the city council could do. They would need to um, that would need to be a vote of of the residents of the city. And then next is um stronger enforcement. So are there measures within the code that would allow for us to um enfor- enforce um the short term rental regulations? Now, uh, Miguel showed a slide earlier that showed that we don't get a lot of complaints like some of the other cities. But it's always good to make sure that we have good regulations. Uh, the other is third po- party monitoring, and so we are looking at um a third party vendor that would monitor short term rentals and how that works in other cities. They have a third party vendor that looks at the listings on the internet and to make sure that that matches up with the permities that we have in the city. And if they don't match up, then we would want to make sure that they're in compliance and that we're also being able to collect the T O T. Uh, and then last is having a short term rental website. So uh currently, all the cities have a short term rental website with information about the regulations and also being able to uh apply for a short term rental. So we think that would be a good place to um have this information on our website. And so that's that's something that would be planned for in the future. Uh, so that's that's the end of my staff report. Um, you know, I just do do want to acknowledge that the economic development director, uh, Selena Jimenez is here and and Cesar uh Lucrecio, who handles the permitting, um, just in case you have any questions of them as well.
Okay, cool question. I have a question. Um, uh, seeing that we have the table, table two reflects just the um monetary trend. Do we have um, do we have the number or short term rentals per year as has its growth?
We we probably could get that, but not, we don't have that for this presentation.
Okay, then one of the things I'd like to see maybe perhaps is the average growth, right, per year? Um, maybe better help track um how how we should approach as far as staffing is concerned, right? If 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 we're not really, if say we had three hundred and twelve applicants, um currently now, or three hu- what did we say? Three, three eighteen, I'm sorry. Three eighteen, what would be, how how would we use those numbers to um adequately staff, right? So if we were to enter into robust program, right, and seeing that, say, for instance, we we grown annually by a total like a number, say, ten homes, fifteen homes, twenty homes, we will need X amount of bodies to adequately staff to monitor what's going on in the city, right? One thing is dollars captured. The other thing is how many people are coming or how many houses or um and or businesses are coming online annually. So one thing I'd like, that would be helpful to see, right? Um, and obviously from there, um, what is uh, what is a a department or staff um and or unit responsibility look like for three hundred eighty homes and or say three hundred and fifty homes going forward, right? So thinking then if we're going to grow uh next year, right, we're coming on, we're at three eighteen, what's it looking? What's what's what does this staff look like for three twenty five, three fifty, three sixty, four hundred homes? You know, as people come come online, right? Um but those are my questions for just this immediate piece here.
Along along those lines, as as vice chair, um, Hernandez is sharing, I I I do know also maybe to take into consideration um conglomerates that are buying houses. So if there there's the same name of your, I I do know my the house next door, uh, the gentleman has verbalized that probably eight out of the houses at Vieira del Sol are his, right? They're they're his, they're his houses. So I think there also have to be a separate tier for someone who is literally developing a capitalistic business that he has. They have a total right to develop, but I think as a city, we need to be mindful that when there is a conglomerate of buyers who are buying homes, you know, for this sheer purpose, then as a city, we need to be mindful that they have to be in a different tier, right? They they just have to, and I think through the legal rounds and through code, we we need to find the appropriate avenues for them to know uh that if they're they want to play in the sandbox, they 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 have to play with a different set of rules. Then a family that is just, you know, trying to rent their house for the three or four weekends of, you know, Coachella Fest and the tennis tournament, right? They're they're just in a different type of tier. So I'm also uh want the city and and the committee to be uh mindful of when you're getting uh these applications with the same name, um, that, you know, it should be a separate conversation or or even legal. Uh, wh- what is appropriate when someone is, you know, literally developing a business around this particular concept?
Thank you for that. I have some additional comments. Can we go back to the recommendations, please? And staff, thank you so much for this information. This is really helpful. Uh, so here, I like to begin with some things here. I do agree with increasing the per uh permit fee because uh, we need to determine what are some of those costs, going back to Commissioner Hernandez. You know, we need to just determine what is that staffing ratio, what are the needs, you know, what? So we can evaluate better for growth or for decreases, you know, we don't know what the future looks like, but it's good to forecast and see how we can leverage staff or how we're going to acquire new staff to manage this program. Second, uh, the tiered fee system, I agree, we can definitely look into that. But I like to jump to the T O T, the transit occupancy tax modification. So I understand that Coachella is at nine percent. Um, I did re- do some research and it appears that uh California is at twelve percent as well as other cities. I know there is actually a pro- uh proposed legislation from uh Senator Limon, S B five eight four, that is proposing a fifteen percent uh T O T by twenty twenty five, something to look at and to consider. I think Coachella stands on its own and we can definitely have that tax. The other thing I did not notice in this presentation is the um Greater Palm Springs tax, I believe is a T B I D. Uh, T B I D. And so I was wondering if we're considering that. I know the city of Indio has that consideration. It's a one percent tax. Again, it's the Greater Palm Springs T B I D, something to consider. Uh, talking about a webpage, uh, I understand and I agree, but instead of a webpage, I think we can leverage the city of Coachella website and create a landing page, which is, you know, because a website having its own website, it's just another resource. It's just a lot of money. I think we can leverage our website. You know, have a new link at a landing page, similar to the city of Indio and Palm Springs. It's all connected together where you can click on and you can see all those details like an F A Q about short term rentals in the city. What is the tax? Where do you submit, you know, your payment for T O T, whether it be quarterly, monthly? I understand the city of Coachella is quarterly. Some other cities are monthly. I would propose to do it monthly because things change. The other consideration I'd like to add to this conversation is to, part of the requirements is to have a hold harmless uh provision or some type of indemnification uh uh attestation or uh form for us where the city is not hold accountable for certain things. And I think our city attorney would agree with me. We don't have that in our requirements. We should consider that. The other thing is an insurance. Uh, these properties are businesses. Um, I, we all want to be protected. I'm sure they want to be protected. I'm confident they might have, they require to have um, a uh uh insurance on the home, but we need to be careful with that. So that's another consideration in reviewing this. Um, lastly, let's see what else. The landing page. Oh, I love that heat map. So maybe on that landing page that we develop, we can provide that heat map because I I like what the city of Indio did. I think we can use them for inspiration that we can adopt ourselves. So you can see all the S T Rs in the city and then you can pinpoint. I also, what I like about the other uh desert cities that they've done, a few of them, is that they have this good neighbor brochure. So I I I saw that in your chart as well. So thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for highlighting that in there. I think we can do that as well. We can talk about, hey, the city of Coachella is X Y Z. If you have any complaints, any issues, you know, add that into that brochure. It's a really nice thing to have, but those are just off top, some of the things that I like to see in this. And then I understand that um we don't have a cap for these short term rentals. Um, I would open it up to the other commissioners from some considerations on that. Um, I I do see that we have a hotspot. We have a like high uh utilization area and that's more, I would say, towards the west side where you know, Coachella Fest and stage of stage coach occurs. But you never know with the train coming, I'm being positive here, we might have other areas, right? So some considerations, I know in the previous meeting, we proposed that the Sevilla two property not have any short term rentals. I think that was our first um uh case study in the community in the city of Coachella where no short short term rentals would be allowed. Is that correct, Commissioner? I think that's what was
Yeah.
proposed?
Yeah, there there is
For three years?
Yeah, there there is some language uh there as well that's been up, that's been provided by the city councils.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to consider that in the conversation because that's a very unique property or area or community that we kind of are using as a case study for, you know, a modest growth in, you know, S T Rs. Uh that's all for me at the moment. But oh, I did wanted to ask code enforcement. Um, what are some adverse or complaint, adverse events or complaints that have, you know, rise from the short term rentals or during Coachella Fest or stage coach?
It would be noise.
Noise.
And parking issues.
Parking issues. I, okay, thank you for that. So we all need, uh, we all knew it would be noise and parking. Um, I would also propose a parking, um rule or requirement, and that would be to the bedroom, you know, one car per bedroom. Uh, re- a requirement, just similar to Palm Springs, that you do that, uh, it's very common knowledge. So I uh, that's my my proposal, my recommendation, just given that I've used Airbnb's, you know, and so I understand what that looks like, what that works like. And I think it it brings harmony to the community because and then you're like, okay, they're following the rules. We can co- live, coexist, you know, I live here and they're here visiting, but there's this mutual understanding. So I I having these rules is not to control or restrict usage. I think it's just to create harmony and be good neighbors. Because I know we're bringing commerce into a community and that changes things a little bit. So um, I'm not about stagnating innovation or business or entrepreneur or making a buck or two, but I also like to be able for the communities and neighbors and families to have harmony within. So that's my rec- those are my recommendations.
Commissioner, can I, can I just um give you some more information on something that you brought up? So uh, you might recall when Sevilla came through the planning commission, yeah, there was that requirement that was placed that limited short term rentals for a certain period of time. Um, and the city council did amend that condition.
Perfect.
Uh, so that if we adopted our ordinance, then it would default immediately to that ordinance and not have to wait those few years. So if there is an ordinance adopted, then they would have to comply.
Understood. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Um, I I do have a question, and this is more same thing with code enforcement and also related to um the existing website. Do we have anywhere for residents to submit complaint forms or is everything done through phone call or email?
Do you want to talk about that? Or Renee?
Oh, members of the commission, there is a phone number that is available uh for uh calls for service for uh short term rentals. We do have uh online, where you can report online or you can call via phone as well, too.
What is our protocol on these phone calls? I have a couple of um um residents that actually complain to me.
Is that for short term rentals?
Yeah, short term rentals.
So for short term, we we have no staff at at night right now.
No, I'm saying is there is there a warning and a second and a third?
Yeah.
I mean, a fine after certain amount of warnings.
Sorry to interrupt. I think your mic is off and the team is asking if you could please turn on your mic, Chair. I apologize for that interruption.
Yeah, there. The one in the middle.
There.
That's all right. Thank you.
So at this time, if the residents are calling the police department for any type of noise activity, parties or or any nuisance that are occurring, the sheriff's department is making the decision on their own to whether cite them, uh, the occupants or actually notify the city the next morning with the call for service log. If we get the call for service log, our code enforcement officers do issue a citation because we take the short term rentals a little bit serious because it's taking a lot from the communities and neighbors that actually live there full time.
So do we have any structure currently in the city where you get one warning, two warnings, three warnings? After that, there's a, there's a fine after so many warnings?
The the fine goes automatically because when you register your property as a short term rental, the business license department does give you the whole uh ordinance that's in place now.
So that's specifically for a short term rental?
It's specifically for short term rental. So you have all the information upfront. Uh, we as code enforcement, as the enforcement portion, we just, you know, rely on the police department because they're the ones that respond at night for these calls for service.
So currently then there's not, like you said, there's nothing, nobody monitoring at night. If you need to call the city right away, nobody's picking up the phone.
The the
You see, some of the suggestions were to have that third party monitoring system and stronger enforcement. So I'm guessing that's where this conversation came in.
Right, so the third party vendor would actually collect that information, uh, collect any type of uh short term rentals that are not being registered, uh, reporting purposes for city council, city staff, uh, and then collect anything, any type of monetary uh T O T taxes that are being collected that ci- cities losing out on at this time.
So when people complain, does it usually go down as a nine one one call or?
No, they they call the non emergency line. Yeah, the the, any resident that's willing to call, uh, they do call the non emergency line. Uh, like I said, the sheriff's department is really good about notifying us by email. We get it the next morning and then we follow up with the call for service log that sheriff's department provides us.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
I have a question.
And I do have another um just comment. So the tiered fee system seems to be the best way, and thank you for mentioning that, to really approach the differentiating um homeowners from investors. Um, with that, I do see that Cat City does um require the property, the property to be the primary residence for folks. So taking that into consideration, if it's possible for us to incorporate that when we're talking about the tiered system, um, whether it's the fact that we continue to waive the fee uh for people that use that as their primary residence, and then we consider, well, how many um, short term rentals do these folks have, even if it is, one of them is their primary residence, right? And considering all of that, making sure that we are always prioritizing um local residents.
Speaking about local residents, um, I last so like to propose that if someone's an escrow and submits an application for an S T R, that it be denied. I think they should be owners and have the deed before they submit an application for an S T R.
And then also just as an additional point uh to Renee, you know, um, I I think uh there's value in going back to the commented director said that there's not as many Um I I think uh there's value in going back to the comment the director said that there's not as many complaints. I think as a community, um we just, it's kind of a thing we just kind of live with, right? We just do, right? And you know, before the boys were born, right? You know, the next door neighbor, we just lived with it, right? La banda estaba fría and we just lived with it, right? Now it's just different, right? And I think going back to the point of Director uh uh Perez saying that we, there's not a lot of reporting. I think it's just a cultural thing, right? So I think there's value. Um just like a couple of weeks ago, I received a little pamphlet for Tierra del Sol that Stephen was gonna have a meeting with the community. Something as simple as that, I think there's value in that, or even being a magnet. Again, I I know there's money and this and that, but I think there's value because. Even though I'm connected with the city and I'm very proud of being a community member and I love my city. There's still a lot of things that I don't know, right? And I think there's a lot of residents that just don't know that there's this option, right? And again, this is not about throwing people under the bus or being a. I was gonna use a ghetto word right now, I'm not. But I think you think what I was thinking of, right, is this, you know, throwing people under the bus, right? Um. But I I think there's value in that. And I also feel that the community needs to know. Um and again, I know this is really hard to kind of figure out sometimes, but there, I I'm I'm also a proponent of of tier. Consequences, right? Um even as a community, we like to party, but there has to be consequences and our. Our our patrons need to know that if they do something like this. Even if it's not a rental, because I know you go back and ask, I appreciate you asking, because even people that live there, then there's people that have parties, you know, every weekend, right? There there needs to be consequences for that also, right? And whatever that might be, it is, right? But I think there's, we need to start with those rentals first. And so the city, the the community also needs to know what those consequences are, right? That, you know, one, two, three, and then you're 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 licensing the revote for a year, right? Or whatever, whatever we decide as a city that it makes makes sense. So I think uh. That's a challenge that I give to you Renee, uh to kind of figure that out, how that would be good. Because I also feel that our community, they just call and then cops sometimes don't come and then we just live with it, right? I I've been told by the sheriff many times that, hey, we're gonna come if we can come, right? Thank God that they have come because they know Oscar Fonseca and they're gonna, I'll be calling, right? I I don't, they probably have me, they know my cell phone number already, right? They're like, is this guy again, right? Calling at three o'clock in the morning. Right? They 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 know me already and because that house has been an issue. But thank God, you know, the last six months it hasn't been, right? Uh and again, we just kind of live with that. But I think there's the, there's value in having that type of information. For our community that I think as a city, we're doing a great job informing our 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 patrons about other opportunities. Why not this, right? Because it's it's only gonna, it's only best to be informed.
So I I have a question regards to the T O T and the bill that um Commissioner Ramirez brought up. So maybe perhaps the legal um can clarify the bill um and when it's gonna be taking place.
So I'm not familiar with the bill, but um if it's something that's being proposed, it would still have to go through the legislative process. Um usually the legislator is at a two year session.
Right.
And I think right now it's on its first year of a two year session. So I think that if it's going through the legislative process still. Um I'm not sure it would um, it it would continue until next year.
Right, so it's, if it, it's, so she wants to propose in twenty twenty five, right? So obviously, the earliest may perhaps that's, that's a deal that they're gonna have to strike in Sacramento.
Correct.
So probably twenty six or and or twenty seven, when the bill would get, you know, be implemented.
And that's fifteen percent, you say?
Yeah, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Just offer a little um um information. So staff understands that the bill is proposing to. Uh add an additional fifteen percent to the twelve percent.
Oh.
That's.
That's, yeah.
On top of the top?
On top of the twelve percent, so.
So is there any consideration from our staff of what what you guys are recommending and?
No, so, okay, just to clarify. So they're they're looking at around capturing thirty percent of T O T.
To increase, yeah.
And so is all that money is, it's staying locally?
It no, it's actually going to uh for the development of affordable housing.
Throughout the state?
Throughout the state.
And so how much, oh, so fifteen percent the state is taking?
Is taking, uh yeah, so Caesar is uh actually our expert on that. Um. Do you want to come up, Caesar, and stop for more insight?
So this is not, this is.
This is different.
Oh, so this is not.
No.
Yeah, good, good, good afternoon, commissioners. Yeah, so right now we have the nine percent T O T tax. So if the, if it passes, the bill passes, they'll add the other fifty percent. So whoever, like say if you rent it, you'll pay the uh twenty four percent T O T tax. Yeah, so the state will keep fifteen and then the the city will keep the nine percent.
And without consideration for tearing or anything, right?
So so say, I don't know, uh San Diego might have a what thirteen, fourteen percent T O T tax. Yeah. So they'll be paying, whoever rents it, they'll be paying like uh the twenty nine percent.
So what's the speculation? Does it look like it has broad support across the legislation?
Yeah, no, I think they tabled it uh for right now, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Consideration.
Yeah, yeah. So I know that I got a lot of.
Eye out on that.
Yes, yes, well, they're always getting legislative updates. So I know um Airbnb and all the other, they're, I know they're fighting it, so. You know, they got their own. Okay, perfect. So what what what's the earliest we can have a ballot initiative here in city Coachella? Are we looking at the pre? March.
Thank you.
March twenty twenty four. Do we have an idea of what what that number looks like? If we were to propose a T O T increase in the city, do we have that number?
The twelve is twelve percent is average, you say?
Probably twelve percent, right, GP? I think uh that was what our city manager was hoping for to at least. Come up to twelve percent, if not thirteen percent, you know, because i- it's, the standard by now is twelve percent across California. And um and we're one of the lowest and we don't even have a hotel in our city, but, yeah, and so. So we're hoping, I think, I thought I thought we talked about thirteen percent potentially, but again, you know. Uh you know, we'd have to have all kinds of workshops and just to get, you know, public support and opinion.
Two twelve percent is, and so how fast, how how confident do you feel you can mobilize to get a ballot initiative?
You know, um, uh, it's gonna take a lot. I I I think we felt pretty confident. We thought we could. I mean, if we have everyone's support, then, you know. We could, but um, I mean. We don't have a hotel in our city, but we do have the short term rentals and so it's something to think about.
Yeah, there's obviously dollars there, right, that can be potentially captured, seeing that we haven't had a, an increase since nineteen eighty six, right? So I think that there there there's dollars left on the table there.
Absolutely.
I I would, I would like strongly suggest that we maybe look at something a little higher than than the average in California. Only because we, we, we do live, uh we are a vacation destination, right, obviously.
Thirteen, thirteen is over the twelve.
I like fourteen, you know what I mean? I, even I like fifteen, you know what I mean? It's like, I like, I like uh working in in odd numbers for so, uh for some reason, I really don't care for even, but uh um. Yeah, if we, if we look, obviously, where we look, where we live, um it's a vacation destination, right? And obviously, we, we haven't moved um this number since nineteen eighty six, so might as well. You know, go after something that is really not gonna um hinder and not gonna impact the local resident, right? Or it's gonna be, it's gonna, this is somebody else's money, not the local resident. Yeah, it's tourists, right? And they're, they're already coming and they're already here, right? And they're already looking. Um and so that's something that I I would, you know, strongly suggest that we look at maybe fifteen percent. Um going in that direction, right? And, you know, having the, the, the necessary workshops to. To get this done and and get it on the ballot by March.
I second that. Yeah, between thirteen and fifteen, I would say as well.
So along, along the question that you just suggested about the community getting behind something like this. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask it. So the money that is generated. That that go to a general pot and is used for salaries? I mean, what is that money? What is that a hundred and twenty, is it earmarked for anything? Because I think the community would be open. You know, to grow that if, you know, it's gonna go, like for me, as a father, again, biasedly, right? I'm just being honest about myself. It's like, if you tell me it's gonna improve our schools, you know, this or that, or our community, or wha- whatever that might be. I think there's, there's value in, in our community to know where, where that money could be earmarked. I'm not saying the whole thing, but I'd say, you know, twenty percent of this funding or twenty five percent of this funding is gonna be earmarked for this or for that, or. I I, one of the things that I kept on saying, I was talking to, to our, our council here this, this uh, this afternoon is a. A lot of our students are also, you know, I'm a career counselor at the university, right? And so I'm always looking for ways of our students to enhance their experience, right? And so, you know, I know C V High now would have aviation, this and that, but it's a cluster, right? So what if all students can be engaged, right? If all students can learn a little bit about agriculture, hospitality, you know? The industries that we have here locally in our city so that we're growing our own workforce, right? And so why can't we be part of that cutting edge, right? Yeah, is it a juggernaut? Is it something that's gonna be worked, this and that? Yes. We're all gonna say about work, but if we're working together to establish some of this funding. To establish some of this connectiveness uh and how we're growing our own industry, I think our, our, our family will be more than willing. Uh to 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 support.
Well, I have some good news for you. Um since he mentioned, you know, he would like to see workforce development opportunities and just like, you know, jobs. Job development. We actually are going to be the recipients of twenty two point one two five million dollars. Through the transformative climate communities program. And so we do have some workforce initiatives. So we, we're gonna be creating um our own, you know, green jobs and all that good stuff. So HVAC technicians, the electricians, these are high paying positions that pay at least fifty dollars an hour. Once you, you know, graduate and get the apprenticeships and all that good stuff, solar installations. Uh in- including um training uh for our youth. So so our um, you know, initiative that we got funded is gonna include not just. You know, the adults, but also our young people. And so they're all going to be trained in green jobs of the future. So we're really, really excited about that. Uh the Strategic Growth Council will make us whole through another initiative. So we, we will actually receive twenty nine point five million dollars. Uh so seven point three seven five will be through another um initiative that they have. And so, so really, we're gonna. Uh Coachella Prospera was funded. So I'm very proud of that. And I just want to tell you that because if you recall, we had some conversations in the previous meeting. Uh we talked about, you know, um what are we doing about displacement avoidance and things like that? So now that's gonna get funded. So we will have a displacement, displacement avoidance plan that will be integrated. Across all of our strategies and it's gonna include, you know, our planning commissioners, city council, other stakeholders and the community. To come together and 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 basically, you know, form these plans, because we have several that we're implementing. And the displacement avoidance plan is just one of them. But we have community engagement, displacement, a data tracking and indicator uh collection program. So that's gonna be tracking all metrics and progress across all of our plans and projects and so much more. It's like so many things. And we're just so incredibly proud uh because uh that was a big win for us. And uh, you know, there's gonna be, um, there were six applications submitted. When people started out, there were actually. Like twenty five people that were interested and said they were gonna submit. And just as time went by, they were like, oh no, this is difficult. We can't do this. We only ended up with six applications, uh uh ours being one of them. So we're really, really happy that we were selected. We rank number two, just so you know. So sh- should something happen, we're number two, we're not gonna be number four.
Awesome.
Good job, Stephen. Thank you for, your great work, your staff also.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
So the money that uh this specific money, is that entitled money or does it go to the general fund?
You know what? It's gonna come to us. We're.
I'm talking about the.
The, oh, the T O T thing.
Your T O T.
Okay, sorry. Uh I think right now it's in the general fund, but, but it all has like, you know, like breakouts, like how he was mentioning. I'd like to see, you know, a benefit here or there and then.
Yeah, entitled money.
Yeah, so, so there, yeah, so it, yeah, it comes back to the community.
So what, what are the things that if, I I wouldn't like to see uh the increase, right? Or the, the, the profits gained from this increase, not earmarked, just only, I would like to see it go to the department. You know, one of the things that I want um is to make sure that we, we profit, properly fund staff. To be able to do the job that needs to do, to be able to capture potentially each and every dollar that we've lost from the past five years. Right? Um, you know, granted, you know, yes, we do have um people, we have, we have three hundred and twelve. Um, you know, current um applicants or licenses issued given, right? But we don't, we don't know how many people are not, you know, applying for, you know, permits, right, et cetera. So I would like to see the dollars um actually go back into the actual department. So we can beef up the department. Staff the department adequately, adequately, and then even revisit this maybe in two to three years' time, right? When we see the trends even in- increase, right? Because obviously, um since twenty nineteen, there's been exponential growth, right? And so meaning that people are coming online all the time, right? And what we are not doing is properly monitoring, right? And so we gotta, we, we, we gotta, we gotta find a way uh to catch up, right? And if um the tax increase is only maybe a Band-Aid, right? Yeah, because we're only capturing money off these three, three hundred and twelve or three hundred and eighteen, right? Um, pretty much is what we're doing, but we, we're, we're not doing is monitoring, right? So we're not monitoring how many the actual um Airbnbs or actual applicants or people, like it might be four hundred, right? Annually or whatever, I don't know, but because we don't have, you know, the, the department adequately staffed, but we're not able to. Actually reconcile properly, right? So that's one of the things that I like to see, right, that the, the money. Stay within the department adequately staffed. And maybe perhaps we revisit this, you know, two years, three years, four years, five years down the line. Where we, where we can reconcile all the numbers and look at our margins and say, okay, what can we do with this money? As now this pot has grown, right? So those are my, those are my comments.
I just wanted to add that we will be looking, uh, we, we did request price quotes from five different vendors. That offer the monitoring and tracking services. So we will be receiving three demonstrations to kind of like, you know, just see. To to compare and contrast and see who would be the best deal, uh because that, that, that's something we want to do here. The other thing that city staff is working on is to getting our software. Um uh, we call it the permit tracker system, but really it's actually a system that integrates all of the departments in the city of Coachella. So that we are better able to process, you know, anything, you know, whether it's, you know, a C U P or some garage sale. Uh application or whatever. Uh so all, all the entire spectrum. And so we're looking at having that platform also integrate with our financial system that we use right now. And also so that we have like online payments and all this good stuff. So it's supposed to be like a full integration. So just pardon us, it's taking us a little minute because it's not that easy to, you know, transition from the system we're using now to. This new system, you know, because you have to change all kinds of things and integrate everything. So so far, we were able to get Blue Beam, which is a uh plan review um system. So, so we are having that paid for. Uh and uh, but once we get these demo- demonstrations that Caesar has um arranged for, then we will be able to. I think, you know, make some headway. And then we also um uh signed ourselves up for additional R G I S as re uh stuff. So basically, we'll be able to look at these heat maps and, you know, create all kinds of information, extract that data. Because as we gives you ex- excellent uh data access. And so we're gonna be working closely with development services. And, you know, again, working together, it's just, it takes a minute. And I've been really, really busy, so I apologize, but we are getting there. And so twenty twenty four is gonna be a smash. Year where we make some great strides, but um so thank you guys for, for giving us your feedback and support.
Would you be able to speak on that one percent that I mentioned for the T B I D?
Oh, um, yeah, so that, um, I know it's, it's a tourist um i- improvement district and so.
Is that something that we classify?
You know.
Can adopt?
And those are kind of tough. They're almost like, if you've ever heard of E I, E I F D, the, um, it's like an improvement. Like it's basically, we're asking our residents to tax themselves or, you know, to, to, so that we have that money to improve those tourist areas or what have you. And so traditionally, the city of Coachella has not um considered those. Just because we already feel that, you know, some of our residents are already paying enough and, you know, you know how it is. And so we. Uh but it's definitely something we can just kind of explore and look into if you'd like, and just to kind of bring it back and see what that looks like. But I do know that it's a little hard on people, because I, I don't know if you guys noticed that the county put out a Eastern Coachella Prospera. Uh E I F D uh proposal, and they used our Coachella Prospera name. I was like, what? Anyway, and uh so they put that, uh, put it, put, put it out there and, you know, and and just uh had that campaign going. And so they were able to get that established. And so that's for infrastructure improvements in the unincorporated rural communities of the, of Eastern Coachella Valley. So um but, you know, people will be taxed, so anyway.
I had to ask.
Eric, can we um, we have a public hearing item on the regular agenda, so we should. Just, just real quick, Caesar, I, I just want to bring this up because we're, we are getting overtime, but there was someone that had some public comment that Caesar. Informed me about. So if you want to hear that, let me know, but you don't have to. It is a study session. But we will have to, I would just make sure the comments are are very uh concise. We do need to move on to.
Uh Gabriel, if you, if you want, we could just take his public comment on the regular agenda.
Okay, so yeah, and just so you know, we have a plan commission meeting next, but there's public comment and there's at the beginning of the meeting, right, on the agenda. Okay, but yeah, wait till we go to the next meeting and then it'll.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be, you'll be up right away in the beginning.
Yeah, I thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your engagement.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to uh, we're gonna close the special study commission uh meeting, study session and go on to our regular meeting. Uh, can I, uh, this is commission meeting, December sixth, two thousand twenty three. Uh, meeting called to order. Can we get the pleasure allegiance, Commissioner? Uh, meeting called to order, can we get the pledge allegiance, Commissioner?
Hernandez.
Sure. Please rise. That place where I have a regard, uh, right again, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible for liberty and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hey, going on to a regular meeting, uh, we get roll call director.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Present.
Commissioner Muriel. Hassan. Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yeah, present. You're going on to the next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda and continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, second.
Second, uh, get roll call director, please.
Uh, Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel, uh Hassan, uh Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
Yes, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Planning Commission meeting, minutes for December sixth, two thousand twenty three.
I believe that's a typo, we meant to say November fifteenth, the um, the minutes are correct uh on the agenda. I'll move to approve the meeting, commission meeting minutes for December, November fifteenth.
Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you.
I like to second acknowledge that there's a typo. Yeah, no, I second.
Okay, all right, let's get a roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present, yes.
Yes, you're going to the next item on the agenda, written communication, anything written communication from director?
None from staff.
Okay, nothing from staff, okay. Next item on agenda, public comment, non agenda items, the public address, the commission on any item of interest to the public that that is not on the agenda, within the subject juris- matter jurisdiction thereof, please limit your comments to three minutes. Go ahead.
Did you open the?
Yeah, let me get the, it's a six oh nine, we're opening the public comment.
Good, good evening, members of the commission.
Good evening.
My name is Angel Cordos, and my background is community development, economic development and small business. I mention this because I generally understand the delicate balance between economic growth, tax revenue and the cost to our communities. I also understand what it's like to start and expand a small business. Not only have I owned a small business myself, including rentals, but I've also assisted hundreds of businesses to start and expand their own, thousands if you include the programs I've managed. While I borrow from this experience, I'm here today under a different capacity, that is, as a proud but also concerned resident of the city of Coachella. As it so happens, I learned about this session this morning when filing a complaint regarding an S T R. Frankly, I'm overjoyed to hear these efforts are taking place, and I want to thank the city and everyone in this room for driving these efforts. There were a lot of excellent suggestions proposed this evening. I would like to introduce a few more, if it's okay, uh, and forgive me if these are being considered. Number one, limiting number of S T Rs allowed, not only for new developments, but also for existing communities. Number two, consider limiting the number of day guests that our S T Rs are allowed to have. One, I understand there's an overnight stay limit, however, there's no day. And finally, I'd just like to mention that I'm incredibly grateful to Mr. Rosales, Peter Hernandez and Cesar Lucrezio. I can honestly say I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for them, considering the turmoil my family has endured over some of our S T Rs. Uh, with that said, I do believe there is a gap in information between the data that is being collected with the Sheriff's Department and the information that we are receiving from the city side. Specifically, the uh, the property next door, I understand, has received over fifty complaints to the sheriff. I don't think this information is being automatically transferred to our city departments. Again, thank you so much for all your efforts. It generally does mean the world to us, and we wouldn't be here if if it weren't for these changes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
A question, can we ask him a question? Because he he didn't mention a property and, but he didn't say the address, so that would, I just would like.
No, I mean, you're not supposed to engage, if you want, he can share it with Gabriel and give it to you later.
I didn't engage with him.
Hey, closing the, any other public comments? Gabe, nothing either?
I don't know if there's any on Zoom, but uh I don't see him.
Okay, we're closing the public comment at six twelve, moving on to the next item on the agenda, reports and requests. Okay, okay, next, next item on the agenda, non hearing items, anything on non hearing items, director?
Sorry, guess my mic was off. I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, next, next item on the agenda, reports and requests.
Yes. Oh, um, reports and requests none, but uh, oh, I have a presentation for the non hearing.
Go ahead, director.
Okay, if we can cue the presentation, please. Okay, thank you, um, chair members of the planning commission, this item is for the roaster Coachella, and this is an item that has gone before the planning commission in the past for a conditional use permit related to alcohol sales. Um, and so the applicant is Teddy Lee. Um, here's a vicinity map of the site that we're talking about, uh, this is a site on Sixth Street. Um, point one four acres and the zoning is downtown uh center in Pueblo Viejo. Some background, this site uh has an existing commercial space the city owns. Um, the building on site is eight hundred twenty square feet, and so the city released RFP uh in order for business to be able to operate the building. Um, Teddy Lee uh was awarded the the lease for this building uh with the proposal to establish a beer uh wine and coffee lounge. So the applicant uh did also receive approval of a conditional use permit in order to um have an A B C license to sell uh beer and wine. Um, but uh apparently, according to A B C, that was the incorrect uh type license that they need, and they actually need it for a type forty two license, which is on sale beer and wine, public pre- premise versus a restaurant. Just to kind of explain that, they they aren't going to have a kitchen in the building where they would prepare uh food as a restaurant, uh, they will be serving food with uh food truck service outside of the building. So the reason this is coming back for planning commission review, any kind of modifications to CUP does require this to be approved by the planning commission. Um, just, you know, the planning commission does review alcohol licenses um according to the municipal code, and um there are some restrictions in terms of sensitive uses. So if there is a site that's within seven hundred feet of a playground, residential property or another liquor store, that there are s- special exceptions that have to be made by the planning commission. In this case, the exceptions don't apply because of its location within the Pueblo Viejo downtown area, uh, but you still need to make a conditional use permit findings. Uh, so here's the approved site plan uh that was approved through the building uh permit process. So this site shows uh the uh two of the parking spaces that the applicant had to construct to accor- uh accommodate accessibility for ADA. Um, you could see the building footprint, the existing building, um, they had to uh construct a trash enclosure, shows where the uh future food trucks would be stationed and as well as the seating that's proposed in the back of the building. And then here's the approved uh floor plan from the approved uh building construction plan set. Uh, so there are two restrooms with access from outside the building. And then ins- inside of the building, there is going to be a roaster, so Sixth Street Coffee will be roasting their beans, so they will have uh beans uh that are be roasted here, made in Coachella. And here are the hours of operation that was last approved by the planning commission. The applicant isn't proposing to change that, but they have indicated there could be a reduction of hours for like the summertime based on how business goes. Um, and so there, these are the improvements that were done, um, they did uh uh paint the building as well as remove that that front structure and look to do a more minimal uh minimalist type uh architecture and look for the building. Um, they're, they are still doing some of the construction on site, but this is what it looks like in the rear. Uh, this is where the seating generally is going to be located, and they are proposing to replace the the wood fence that's in the rear. So um, the recommendation from staff is to adopt the resolution that was prepared to modify the conditional use permit to allow for the change in the type license from uh um from a type forty one to a type forty two license. And the applicant previously called the the business um Coachella General, but it looks like the name is the roaster Coachella, unless uh, I I'm incorrect, but maybe the applicant can speak to that. But uh, the staff does recommend approval with the findings and conditions in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions if you have any, and Steve Garcia from Sixth Street Coffee and with the applicant um is available as well.
Is there, is it a two truck uh capacity or?
Um, on the plans, it looks like that's, that's probably the maximum that would fit.
Okay.
And then also, we have the building official here, if there's any question.
So this is beer and wine, not liquor?
No liquor, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a, what, is there a plan for the grease that's going to be produced by these food trucks or what's going on there?
Yeah, I don't think uh, maybe the uh building official can speak to that, but I don't think there's a requirement for the uh unless they were, I guess, permanent.
Yeah, that's my question, so the the food trucks are not, uh, and they're not, they're not, there's just, they're not stationary there, right? They're gonna.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
They're gonna be rotating those.
Yeah.
Food trucks, okay.
Yeah, and those are good questions also for the applicant, because he could explain more how that's going to work.
Yeah, because I I I've been in, I've been in in these types of uh layouts where the the foods are sta- the trucks are stationary and then and then a a restaurant is hired, you know, to use that that kitchen, right, but the trucks never move. So that that would be my biggest uh, my biggest question is that are those trucks adjusting or moving or they're stationary?
Yeah.
Um, Commissioners, I think the what's proposed in front of us is for the liquor. Can we talk about other things aside from the liquor license that is being asked for modification? I'm just, just question.
I mean, it should be kept to to what's being requested.
Understood, just wanted to make sure it brought the conversation back.
It it should be limited to what's what's in front of you.
Yeah, because I believe that was already approved previously, correct?
Correct.
Wonderful, okay, sorry, Commissioner, I just wanted to make sure we stay on track. Um, I would love to hear from the applicants if they can, you know, speak on.
So what I is, is can we condition the conditional use permit?
You still can, yeah, there's start, I mean, this is, if so.
So you can, you can make a suggestion.
Okay.
Um, but they don't have to accept it. Um, they've already accepted the conditions of approval from the past meeting. So in front of you is just the approval of the change from a type forty one to a type forty two. I mean, you can make the suggestion, but it doesn't have to be received or um accepted.
I do want to make clear, I did make one change to the condition of approval from the last time.
Okay.
Which was if they had to change their hours to later, that that the they could present that to the development services director without having come back to planning commission. So if that's not acceptable to the planning commission, then definitely talk about it. But a lot of times I realize just like a simple change to the hours, if it's like half an hour, you have to go through a whole process and pay a fee to amend the CUP.
So you guys are just handling it over counter?
That that, that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
So has that been adopted? So I understand what our process is for this part, so can we, is that, are you asking us to adopt that recommendation or?
That's part of the resolution in front of you.
Let me uh open up the public calendar. Uh, open up the public calendar. Ways of judicial.
The public hearing.
The public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing, the public hearing calendar, ways of judicial. Uh, number two, Coachella general alcohol sales. Conditionally use permit number three fifty seven modifications to the, to allow the liquor sales as part of the proposed eight hundred and twenty square feet of beer and wine and roastery uh coffee lounge, A B C type forty two on sales beer and wine in an existing commercial building located at twelve fifty eight Sixth Street in the deep, deep DT dash P V downtown zone. Teddy Lee applicant. Should we open up the public hearing or?
Yes, sir.
Open up the public hearing at six twenty two? You have any comments, public comments?
Um, I don't see any on Zoom, but uh you do have the the applicants in the audience, just in case you have a question.
Can we hear from the applicant?
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At your service.
Sure, I just got one question for you, that's first and foremost, thank you so much, we appreciate your business here in the city, we appreciate you investing in the city. We appreciate you carrying out your your vision, your dreams here in your local city, and thank you for everything that you've brought, you've um obviously, I, you have a tremendous value, um, and we want to acknowledge that, I want to acknowledge that personally. Um, and just one thing is, is this all you need to?
Yes.
Is this to take you over the finish line?
Yeah, so we could just proceed with the business.
Okay, good, okay. When do you, when do you foresee to be open?
We're looking at a date, uh, not a set date, but sometime in January.
January?
Yeah.
Nice.
Depending on how long the permits take, of course, right? But that's what we're uh, we're aiming for. I mean, there's other permits that we still need to get from county health. Um, but uh, and then depending on what the A B C license take, uh, but that's what we're aiming for.
Awesome, yeah, good, that's all, that's all I have for you.
Wonderful, and do you have any questions regarding the food trucks?
So you had mentioned something about the grease trap.
Yeah.
The grease trap was um.
I can't comment on the grease trap. Sorry, you already.
No, no, I was just saying, clarify, I was like, what are we doing?
So the show.
For building the community here for us. And it's going to be a success, I I heard it's a great one, everybody's excited.
Yeah.
What you're developing, I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving at the university, a couple of our students um already know um that this thing is coming, so um, they're excited for it, but I think the city is is very hungry for yet another amazing opportunity, obviously, that corridor is is going to become very well represented.
Yeah.
Um, um, and very well known, not just regionally, but I think nationally that it's going to be a spot, so.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, no, my comment was just clarity, I wasn't gonna.
Yeah, clarity.
It was, uh, actually was, you don't really require a grease trap when you have a food truck, you know, so.
Yeah, we're, we're not a, yeah, we're not a commissary, so there is no, just answer the question, we're not a commissary, so there will be no trucks overnight. Um, we'll switch them out, you know, bring in variety into the area, so.
Okay, so we, can we get a motion on the?
Yes, um.
Is that all the, all the comments, questions?
Just, uh, Chair, just make sure you close the public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, closing the public hearing at six twenty five, can we get a motion on the?
Chair, I um, I can motion, a motion to uh approve the conditional use permit number three five seven modification to allow liquor sales as part of a proposed eight hundred and twenty square foot beer, wine and roastery coffee lounge, A B C type forty two on sale beer and wine in an existing commercial building located at twelve fifty eight Sixth Street in the D T P V downtown zone. I'll second that.
Get a roll call, director?
Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Congratulations, good luck, thank you.
Which is right there. Hey, going on to our next item on the agenda, informational?
Uh, just real quick, Selena already talked about it, so good news about that transformative climate communities grant. I think one of the things that she did mention as part of the grant is that it would uh provide funds for some new housing and commercial on Sixth Street, pretty close to the roaster, right? Um, it would be that that parcel that is uh right across the street from the Coballd Apartments that's under construction right now. So it would, I think it was a little bit more than a hundred senior apartments on uh like a sec- second, third, potentially a fourth floor, but ground floor uh commercial, so we would still have to work that out.
So we would still have to work that out, that would come before the planning commission or approval. But uh, that's also some exciting news that that block could actually pull out.
Nice.
So this is where they're currently storing their, their equipment or materials?
Yeah, or Chelsea, yeah.
So is it gonna be a Chelsea?
Development, yeah.
And so obviously they.
Okay, anything else on informational?
Um, last thing, uh, we, we did meet with uh RCTC recently, they're the Regional Transportation Board. So it looks like we will have a kickoff for the rail station feasibility study uh the second week of January. So there's gonna be more to report on that, but that's exciting news. Uh, we do have to finish that whole effort by December of two thousand twenty-five, so it's a cheer effort. But you'll hear a lot more about it and there's gonna be opportunities for the Plan Commission to be involved.
Perfect, good job, uh, Director Perez and staff.
Good job, yeah, thank you.
Also, T, I just wanna make a statement, just wanna commend all staff. Um, it's been a, it's been a great year, it's been a, a good, uh, what is it, nine months that we've been, um, been here working with you. And I wanna congratulate you, your staff and, and kudos to you guys, you guys have done a terrific job, you know, and, and it's been, um, it's, it's, it's been, been very insightful and been very rewarding thus far, you know, and I just wanna thank you and, and obviously all state staff for the work that you guys do and the, and the information you. Who's, who represents you, thank you so much, make you guys are, we'll keep you on for another year. Thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn, I think?
When, when's our next meeting?
Whenever do we have our next meeting?
It would be January seventeenth, but the, the next possible meeting could be January third, but that would actually be the day we just come back.
Was it six?
No, it'd actually be January the third.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, it becomes a little bit difficult to be the seventeenth and then just kind of be aware the plan is to have the uh sidewalk vendor ordinance presented in front of the Plan Commission.
Are, are we coming back with this policy for, for what we just heard today or is that, is that gonna move on to?
Um, the likely what's gonna happen, there'll probably be a study session or some kind of informational item to the city council to see what they'd like to do.
Good.
And probably hear the similar um report. And uh, similar to what happened with sidewalk vendor ordinance, they could decide, hey, we want the Plan Commission to make a recommendation or they just want something to come back to them.
Okay, Merry Christmas to all our commissioners, our attorney, staff, everybody, thank you, guys.
So just gotta gift the Chinese food for you guys.
We still need to. I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
Give a second.
I'll second that.
You get roll call, director?
Okay, Commissioner Arviso?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Uh, alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.